Okay, good morning, everybody. Welcome. It's eight thirty. We'll get going. First item is approval of the agenda.
I'm going to move to approve the agenda as presented.
Seconded?
Moved in seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? So unanimous? Public comment? Do we have any folks here to? Help me get my. Is it now? Okay.
Please.
Okay, sorry. Public comment. Do we have anyone to speak on anything? You seeing anybody on? No. Okay, so we'll move on to the meeting minutes of March seventh.
I'm going to move to approve the minutes of the March seventh, two thousand twenty-three, Commission's regular meeting as presented.
Seconded? Moved in seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So unanimous? Maintenance. Request approval to replace jail cell lighting. I'd like to introduce that. Morning. Morning.
I don't know what you have for materials, but probably no surprise to me that these get banged around quite a bit in the jails, nothing more. Takes more abuse than those lighting fixtures, especially in recent years, as there have been more and more damage, more and more difficult to repair. So that's why Tim approached Michael about moving this project forward, and I agreed fully. So we've gotten a price from Gilman Electrical Supply, which is the regional supplier for this brand of lighting. And that is, they're the only supplier of this type of lighting anywhere, okay, somewhere in New Jersey, I think.
Is the price that you have here for installation as well?
No. I'm saying that we'll, that our electrician can install them for around ten thousand dollars. And I'm saying the cost warranty, sixty.
Combined?
Right.
This, this sounds like LED. What's there now?
Yeah, it's fluorescent.
Fluorescent, okay, so.
The way you've got is a fixture that has two fluorescent tubes in it, and also a Bi-Ax four-pin nightlight. And so what they do, whether they object to the nightlight or the daylight, they smash it into a break. And the cabinets endure it, and the lenses sometimes will endure it, but the fixtures themselves, broken shards of glass everywhere. And as they become more misshapen, in many cases, once you smash the lights, they begin to now, like, fragments shatter out of the fixture into the cell itself. And when you take one down, you hit with a shower of these, these things. And, uh, and the selection of these fixtures, I went over the specs and Shepard and I agree that the most sturdy, uh, options are selected. This is a half-inch thick, like high-rex glass, and welded and powder-coated ground seams that are smooth. Because also we'll take a heap of part of it out to hide parent canal, you have contraband in there. Uh, this, this will solve an ongoing problem and probably save ten thousand dollars a year in, in lighting and labor, just, in just light bulbs. We'll go up to, we're gonna go today and we swap out thirty, thirty bulbs.
Any other questions? All again, any questions?
No. So tell me if this is a, meet your needs there. A motion to approve the replacement of cell lighting fixtures in the jail from Gilman Electric. Recognize them as a sole source provider for the sum not to exceed sixty thousand dollars to pay for these fixtures and their installation with APRA funds. Does that meet your needs?
Yes.
Gentlemen, that's my motion.
Seconded? Chair? Moved in seconded. Any further discussion? Questions, comments? Ready to vote? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
None opposed? So unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. It's a big help for us. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Airport. First up is request approval for the facility use agreement with Civil Air Patrol and the airport manager to sign. Leroy, you hear us?
Yeah. Uh, back, backstory to this is the Civil Air Patrol's building is, needs some work. So they contacted me, and apparently it's been done in the past, to know if they could use the meeting room here at the, at the firehouse to hold their weekly meetings. So Michael came up with this facilities agreement, um, structure, so we're kinda, that's kinda where we are. It's, it's off at the CAP for review also.
They haven't reviewed it yet, Leroy?
They, they haven't reviewed it. They haven't gotten back to it, back to me yet.
They're signatory to this, this form, Michael?
Uh, yes.
It's usually our tradition that we, we ask the other party to sign and agree before we do. Gentlemen, do you wanna, what do you, how do you wanna handle this?
My, I feel that, you know, we should have a facilities use agreement so it becomes, you know, pretty routine. This sounds like the first time we've done this, and so the, uh, I think it makes sense to at least approve the form so that Leroy has, you know, a template to work from. I don't know if that's the idea here, or, or if we wanna take each, each individual one separately, but I think that adoption of a form may be. I don't know if that's your intent, Michael, or?
I, I mean, certainly one has to come before the other.
Yeah.
I mean, I think Leroy, obviously not knowing the timetable, how long it's gonna take them, but presumably it wasn't going to be too long. Wanted to make sure that he'd be able to find it if, if the commissioners were in agreement, so.
Yeah, they have to work, get through their legal systems and everything else, you know, typical, I think it's part of the Air Force, so it could take some time to work it through.
Yeah, so, and answer your question, Phil, I am all right with this.
Proven, approving the form or approving the agreement?
Both, in this instance. For me, I'm a person.
Well, I, I don't think this is a major issue. I don't think there's any reason to. It's something that's super pressing. I don't think it's super pressing, though, right? Uh, I don't know.
Is that a question?
I, I didn't, I didn't hear what, what John asked.
John asked if this was a pressing matter.
Um. No, it's not a real pressing matter. It was, um, the normal trend I would have also would be get their signatures first, uh, like the, the next item on the agenda. But, you know, it was just trying to get a expedite it. It, it can go any direction, you know, it was, and by the time it warms up, they may not even need it, so.
I'd like to, I'd like to hold to our tradition and whatnot, so I'm gonna move that we approve the facility use agreement form with the Civil Air Patrol and have the airport manager discuss this with the CAP.
Seconded? Okay, so basically we're approving the form but not the.
Right, he'll get signatures from CAP, bring it back to us in final form, and then we can act on it.
Okay.
All right, yeah.
That's fine, Leroy?
Yeah, that's fine with me. Yeah, yep.
Everybody's clear what we're voting on? Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
So unanimous? Next up is request approval of the lease and operating rights between Hertz Corporation and the County of Hancock. Leroy?
Uh, yeah, that's, this is a renewal. Uh, we did, uh, change the fees a little, um, this year. Looked like they hadn't had their fees changed in several years.
Contract or agreement? Contract or agreement?
It's a lease, uh, lease and operating rights agreement.
Agreement, okay.
It's a, it's a one-year with, with a second-year option.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna move to approve the lease and operating rights agreement between Hertz Corporation and the County of Hancock.
Seconded? Moved in seconded. Is there any further discussion or comments? Somebody's all right? All, uh, call vote, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed? So unanimous. Thank you, Leroy.
Thanks.
Uh, next up is the big opening for, uh, reconstruct Caruso Drive, reconstruct short-term parking lot, rehabilitate section of Apron, uh, of the Apron area.
Is this one bid for the three projects, Leroy?
Correct. That is, it, it's one project with three, three sections to it.
Okay.
That makes sense?
Yeah, yeah, I just, you're bidding, but you're bidding the three projects under one bid, right?
Correct, correct.
Okay.
Okay, and then there's, there's, the next item is, is a separate item. It's airfield marking and crack ceiling.
Correct, that's two, two projects for twenty-three.
That's right, and the first one has three parts to it.
Three locations, right.
Three locations.
First one has three parts.
Okay, so.
Do those tell you which, which is which?
Well, we have two that are clearly marked. The third one, uh, we're not sure, but we'll open the two and then we'll open the third, see what's inside. Uh, so the first one is from northeast paving.
And these will all have to go to Jacobs for verification.
Cover letters, this is. It's the file. Bunch of different, uh. Okay, here's the bid summary. So, again, this was from northeast paving. It says, Enrova, Euro, Eurova Atlantic Coast, and the amount of one million, six hundred thirty-six thousand, thirty-five dollars.
Which?
That is this is the, uh, reconstruct Caruso Drive, reconstruct short-term parking lot, and rehabilitate the Apron area. And there's complicated bid, so. Trying not to speak. So that was, that was the summary of, of the, of the bid, so. Northeast paving was, I'll restate the amount. One million, six hundred thirty-six thousand, thirty-five dollars.
I'm gonna move that we take the bids under advisement and take no act, when, have you done all?
No.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I've got two more, actually. Second one is from Sergeant Corporation.
That's the county's bid form?
Yes.
And, gee, Leroy, can't you spell conform with the amount beyond the front page?
You would think, yeah.
Okay, uh, again, this is, uh, to reconstruct Caruso Drive, reconstruct short-term parking lot, rehabilitate the Apron area. Uh, this bid, again, from Sergeant Corporation is one million, six hundred forty-three thousand, one hundred and eighty-five dollars.
Six hundred, yup.
Six thirty-six. Six thirty-six.
Wow, pretty close.
Very close.
Yeah, those are pretty close.
Okay, and then we have one more that we're not sure what it is. This is from Highlight Airfield Services LLC. Okay, this is actually, uh, this is the actual, this is the next item. So, uh, on item C, we, uh, we got, again, two bids, one from Sergeant, and the other one from northeast paving.
So now I'm going to move that we take the bids from Northeast and Sergeant under advisement, take no action until a later meeting.
Seconded? Any further discussion? Moved in seconded? Any questions, Leroy? Comments?
Uh, nope, nope, that would be the appropriate action.
Got Michael, yeah, all set. Okay, so we're ready to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So unanimous? Okay, next up is the bid opening for the airfield, uh, marking and crack ceiling project. Looks like we have one from Highlight Airfield Services LLC, Watertown, New York. Highlight Airfield Services LLC. Okay, and that bid is a hundred eighty-eight thousand, hundred eighty-eight thousand, eight hundred seventy-five dollars.
That's the only bid you have for the market?
And that's the only bid we have, uh, from, for airfield marking, and that's from.
Okay, so, I'm gonna move we take the bid from Highlight Airfield Services under advisement and take no action until a later meeting.
Seconded? Moved in seconded. Any discussion? Leroy, you're all set?
Yeah, I'm good with it.
Michael? Okay, we're ready to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed? So unanimous? Michael, give you these three things.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
See you, Leroy.
See ya.
Next up is the jail. Request approval to promote, uh, Ernest Finch Jr. to Community Correction Specialist effective March eighteen, twenty twenty-three.
I'm gonna move to approve the advancement of Ernest Finch Jr. to Community Correction Specialist and congratulate him on his promotion. Finch, seconded?
Finch, okay, I'm sorry. What did I say, Finch?
Finch.
Sorry, I missed that. So moved in seconded. Shepard, do you have anything to add?
No, this position's been open for, over, over a couple of years, and so this is a big addition that Fitch will make. He's had great experience, and he does a good job.
That's great, so congratulations. Uh, any further comments? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed? So unanimous? Uh, next up is a request approval to purchase a new printer copier in the jail.
Yes, so, uh, we have a need of a photocopier in the booking area. We have been using hand-me-down from the deeds office now for several years, uh, and also an admin, uh, copier will be thrown in there as well. We are using old booking copier on admin, and it's just, it's in sad shape.
I'm sorry, are you asking for two copies?
Nope, they're gonna put, they're gonna replace one for free. Uh, they have the same model that we have on admin. They're gonna replace that. They have it on the shop. Uh, but the booking printer they're actually going to replace for us.
Good deal, can't beat the price.
Well, that was part of the proposal.
That would be part of the proposal.
Yeah. Okay, I'm gonna approve the purchase of a Xerox B seven, one, three, five, thirty-five print per minute copier printer from Transco for the sum of five thousand, four hundred nine dollars to recognize Transco as a sole source provider and to pay for this equipment from APRA funds.
Seconded? Moved in seconded. Any further questions or comments? We're gonna vote all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
So unanimous, thank you very much.
I'm going to move that we approve the employment of Benjamin Brown of Blue Hill as a full-time corrections officer effective April first, two thousand twenty-three, with full benefits at level nine C.
Seconded? Anything seconded? Or Shepard, do you have anything to add?
No, just he's a current employee of, uh, Main State Prison, so he's got some great experience from down there, and he's certified.
Now, we had a discussion, Mary Ann, last meeting and whatnot, have you? I'd like to see, Frank, that anytime we ask for something more than starting wage, that, that's, we'd like to know that that's been discussed with our human resource director.
Yes.
And that she can concur with that. Now, this is the thing about, pardon?
Yeah, I did, I did speak with him about it.
You did, and you concur with this.
I concur. I mean, he has very good experience working in basically prison already, and he has great experience, um, and should be given the starting wage that's up higher with the nine.
Jim, good. Thank you, Chip, for doing that. I'd really like to see that part of the process for all departments.
Sounds good. Great, thank you. So moved in seconded. We're ready to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you, commissioners. And, uh, just as an update, this will fill all the jail positions, uh, on some wood.
Oh, you just, you just jinxed yourself today.
I know, I did. I'll come some wood somewhere, so.
Even that, that's not, not wood in this room.
No, it's not, not wood.
Congratulations, Jim.
Congratulations, thank you.
Thank you, commissioners. Very much.
Next up is the sheriff, uh, discussion regarding call sharing.
Sheriff? Good morning, gentlemen. This is just to kind of bring you up to speed a little bit. I don't know if you've been seeing, uh, maybe some correspondence from, uh, main county commissioners and maybe seen, uh, some testimony that was given in Augusta in regards to two bills that were submitted out of Penobscot County. One was submitted by Representative Perry and the other by Senator Guerin. Uh, one was asking for five hundred thousand dollars, and the other was asking for a million dollars roughly to fund new positions at the Penobscot County Sheriff's Office so that they would not have to go on the back of, uh, tax payer, of, of the property. And the lieutenant colonel for the main state police testified adamantly against that proposal. Um, I suspect, thinking that the main sheriff's association was going after their pot of gold or their money that they have in their budget. And by no way, shape, or form is what that legislation was for. But I think now it sounded like those bills are gonna be pulled, and I think the biggest reason is because, uh, those two bills were specific to Penobscot County. That didn't include Hancock County or anybody else. So I understand that, uh, Sheriff Morton wasn't aware that they were going to submit those two bills, but he had had conversations from the past that he was gonna need some more people. Uh, he had recently had a conversation with Lieutenant Johnston, who oversees the troop, and he was advised by the lieutenant that their call sharing agreement is expiring, I believe it was in May of this year, and that there would be some more changes. He didn't allude to what those changes were or anything about that. Uh, I made a call, or actually, I submitted an email to Commissioner Sarge Chuck requesting, um, the state police budget for this year and next year. And miraculously, I got a phone call from the colonel. And I assured the colonel the main sheriff's association were not going after funds for the main state police, but we were looking for options of possible from the general fund to help us fund positions where we are taking on the lion's share, and probably most likely very soon, taking on all the rural patrol. Uh, I had a fairly lengthy conversation, but he did not go into where they were gonna go. I still got the, yes, we're gonna support the call sharing agreement and all those types of things. So I just felt it was important that you knew that there's more movement, more things going on behind there. And quite frankly, if, if there's gonna be some changes in Penobscot County, we're in the, you know, the same troop patrols here, that patrols Penobscot County, Washington County, and Piscatawess County, um, that they're probably, when our agreement at the end of the year comes out, there may be some more changes to that. What, to see what they are, I couldn't tell you, but I think I've advised you in the future, uh, in the past, that there's a good possibility that that's gonna go away. Um, they, the colonel did make it very clear that they were specializing in many, many ways, and they were taking people out of rural patrol and putting them with specializations, whether it's the bomb squad, the tack team, and those kinds of things. Certainly nothing that any sheriff's department in this area would want to get involved in because of the expense and the amount of people that it would take or do that. So those are some of the things that are continuing to go. Um, the main municipal association executive director has been working on an idea, which is in the infancy stages, on to generate funding in each county that would help defray the cost of adding, uh, new, new officers and so forth and so on. That still is, that is still in the initial stage, and we don't know where that's gonna go, but they've been working, uh, main municipal has been working with, uh, the president of the main sheriff's association and the executive board to try to come up with some funding other than going to, uh, the general fund, which I, I don't suspect is, there really has not been a lot of support for going to the general fund, because many of the sheriffs that are there were sheriffs when the Board of Corrections was there, when they were assisting in funding the jails and all the red tape and the strings that was attached to it. It was just a nightmare. So they, that was the primary reason why they did not want to look for monies from the general fund. So, uh, it's still a big soup sandwich. We don't know what's gonna go on. We can't get any, any answers away you're gonna go. I, I really have a problem with that. Um, because I suspect, just like when they decided that they were gonna go to one-third, that they were gonna cover. That was a meeting. They show up, this is what we're gonna do. Thank you very much, whether you like it or not. That's, that's a tough pill to swallow, and that's a tough thing to try to settle to, to the taxpayers in Hancock County. So, I, I hope, uh, MCCA gets a little more involved and starts looking at some ideas and some thoughts and maybe partner a little bit more with, uh, main municipal. Main municipal is getting involved, obviously, because the, the cities and the towns don't want to be taxed anymore, uh, and that's who main municipal represents. So, uh, if you have any questions, that's roughly, uh, what I have for information right now, and I wanna try to keep you aware of what's going on behind the scenes as much as I can, because I don't want to come up next month and say, hey, guess what, they're all done, so.
Question?
I don't have a question, but I do have a statement. And I can tell you that, uh, today, under the present situation, there is not total agreement on, on this commission that we'll take over all call share, uh, all calls if the state police get out of the business. So as you are working with your counterparts out there and whatnot, you should let them know that we may be headed for a train wreck here because I'm not, I'm not in favor of saddling back in the county tax pay for the full cost of all of rural patrol when we've got state out there with a, with a, another force that could be assisting us, so. That's my.
I can't argue with that. I can't argue with that. I mean, that, that organization, the state police is there to, to, to roll patrol. There are three hundred seventeen people active this time, according to the budget that I looked at. Um, and they have forty-five open positions. So.
So the fear is here that they get out of that business, they don't trans, you know, they're obviously funded to do rural patrol. So they get out of that business, retain the funding, and they'll be looking at the counties to, to pick up that slack with no funding. Is that a fair characterization of what our fear is?
That's pretty close to it, Paul. That's, that's, that's it. That's what it is. So.
I just wanted to give somebody your Reader's Digest version of what we're talking about, the ramifications and, and the potential costs involved because they're huge.
Yeah.
And, and, you know, counties, not just Hancock County, but counties in general probably are not in a position to pick up that slack without at least the funding that, that's going to state police to do it now.
Yeah, and, and they shouldn't be asked to.
Yeah.
They should not be asked to. I, I mean, the state, uh, should be supplying a lot of these services. And, and I have a roster for the troopers that are assigned to, uh, this troop. There are only two troopers that are currently handling complaints that live in Hancock County. There are two corporals and two sergeants. But the corporals and sergeants are now classified as supervisors. The sergeants always were, and they didn't handle complaints, but now with the promotion of many corporals, um, they don't handle complaints either. So we have troopers that are responding from Penobscot County. If they respond, many times it's a phone call for a complaint, depending on what it is. And the likelihood that a lot of these complaints are gonna be followed up on is, is pretty slim. So not only are you not gonna get a heck of a lot of service, you wonder what the quality of the service is gonna be. You know, we had, uh, a situation where a trooper, uh, within the last couple of weeks had made an arrest and called and asked to open the Sally Port. So the dispatch notified the Sally Port and, um, after five to ten minutes, the jail called down and said, it hasn't gotten me yet. Is there a problem? Well, he was parked in front of our garage doors down there. He thought those were the Sally Port doors to the jail. So he didn't even know where the jail was. So who knows what's gonna happen, but I'll do my best to keep you apprised of what's going on. If you have any questions, you know how to get a hold of me.
Great, thanks.
And just one other little thing there. I, uh, the chiefs and myself are working on a mutual aid agreement here for Hancock County. And next meeting I'll have a copy of that for you to look at and approve me to the side, uh, if you have any questions. So I just want to make sure that you know that that will come next meeting.
We're, we're special, we're, we're trying to get our agreements to meet the scrutiny for liability. So if you could run that by Michael first, so he can check that.
Absolutely. I'll send it to him because that's, that's the process that we've agreed that that's how that filters out to your folks. And what I usually do if I send it to him, I usually CC you as well, just so that you know what's coming. But that's, that's what it is. And I, I believe it's just freshening up an agreement that it maybe had been there in the past, but.
Yeah.
Next month.
Yeah, great. Thank you very much, Sheriff.
I'll be back up. Patrice is gonna call me. I gotta go make some phone calls, but she's gonna call me when we get into union discussions and I'll come back up.
You seen Jill this morning?
Have I seen? I have not. I have not. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Okay, next up is, uh, ARP, ARP, MDI Regional High School Septic System Funding Committee.
So at the last meeting, uh, had brought their original email, uh, and that kind of gave a, a broad outline of the fact that the MDI High School is looking to our needs to replace their septic system there, uh, at a cost of a little over two point nine million dollars. So that was tabled by the, the commission last meeting and told this meeting to give, uh, an opportunity for, uh, Commissioner Parry to, uh, provide some type of inputs and stuff for the district as well. And also to hopefully get some additional information from them as well. And, um, they did kind of provide a little bit of updated information, a more project narrative outline. Um, and they indicated that they are looking for or from the county, if at all possible, for the full two point nine million amount or, or amount, sorry. So that's kind of basically where we stand. And I did request to them, and I believe it was forwarded on, to make sure that the appropriate decision-making body associated with, with the high school and, and the, uh, uh, district of school over there was also encouraging and recommending this. Right now, of course, once we've just been with the maintenance director. And so what you have and what it gives is what, what we have right now.
Is there somebody from the high school here or on?
I don't, I know they're in there, but I don't know who they are.
It doesn't appear that this has gone to the, this has even been discussed with trustees or the school boards or.
I'm not of that understanding either.
Yeah.
So, but, but the question was is whether you want me to work with them to obtain additional information as well, or whether you'd even entertain this? Because I certainly didn't want them to be waiting on us with any type of repression that you're gonna get two point nine million dollars if that's not the case. Uh, so I'm sure that sooner they're aware of, of a necessity, if that's the case, uh, then we need to look elsewhere as well. They probably want to know as well, so.
My feeling is that this is, first needs to be discussed at the municipal level among the men, of the towns. I mean, this is a major amount of money. And, uh, you know, there are many schools in, in the, in the county. I know this is in my district and, and, you know, it, it, um, it'd be nice for me to, you know, say, yeah, this, this is a need, but the case has not been made and I would have, you know, fiduciary responsibility as to the county as a whole. And, um, pretty hard for me to to, to bless this.
And I guess my comment, Paul, is, is that would it make a difference? In other words, if everybody from the superintendent, two trustees, right down through the principal and maintenance director said, yes, we'd like to have this, wouldn't that make a difference in that decision? And I don't think, for me, it doesn't make any difference who's asking. It's really the project. And my first reaction, I still hadn't gotten away with it, from it, is, good Lord, can you imagine the construction projects in our school systems around Hancock County?
Yeah.
And if we started funding repair projects for schools, that would be gone tomorrow. I mean, literally, can you just imagine everything from paving your driveway to, you know, to.
Oh, a third of it. This is a third of it.
Yeah, well, wow, three, three million out of what's left of our thing is, uh, a third of the funds. And, uh, I, I just think we're opening up Pandora's box, first of all, to even consider this. And, uh, even if we made a small contribution, or a small contribution is still a lot of money when everybody out there wants a small contribution. So I'm, I'm prepared today to say terribly sorry. We know there's a need, but this just doesn't fit. This just isn't going to work. And I think it's time to tell these people, we've been putting them off now, at least three meetings now, that we need to tell them that, uh, this, this isn't gonna work, gentlemen. Ladies and gentlemen, and, uh, stature process on finding that money somewhere in each project. So, John, are you ready to move today?
Yeah, yeah, I.
I'm going to move.
Our money that the town's got.
Yeah.
Can also be used.
Right.
At least for some portion of it.
I'm gonna move that we deny the request from the MDI Regional High School for financial systems to their faulty septic system.
Seconded. So moved and seconded. Any further discussion or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed, so you can answer.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, present, uh, treasure presentation and review, audible of the two thousand twenty-one audit findings with representatives of Chester M. Kearney Certified Public Accounts. Sounds like.
Tim Poitras is on us. And Michael Beardsley.
I don't, we don't have their audio.
There we go. That's better. I'm assuming you can hear me now.
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Does everybody have a copy of the file? I just want.
They should have.
Okay.
All right, so we will, uh, go down through the audit briefly and, um, if you have any questions, feel free to, to jump in. This is the, uh, December thirty-one, twenty twenty-one audit. Um, I'll just note, the only thing that is unusual about the audit report is you do have an adverse opinion with respect to governmental activities. And the reason you have that is because you're more or less unable to comply with what's called GASP-75. And what that does is it requires you to report, uh, liability for your share of the Maine Municipal, or of your health plans, um, retirement liabilities. Uh, I believe you're with Anthem. And Anthem doesn't provide you the proper reporting to do this, to comply with a standard. Uh, so to, to do it would be expensive. And, I mean, it, it really doesn't mean a whole lot to your financial statements. It's a standard that was instituted to, um, have governments that have their own health plans that are un, underfunded, um, report these liabilities, but everybody got caught up in it. So, uh, it's been a few years now. We've been reporting it this way. And, and while it does show adverse opinion, it, it really doesn't take away from your financial statements in, in our opinion, so.
Is this something that's typical of entities such as ourselves?
Um, I wouldn't say typical, but I, you're the only, you're not the only county that we audit that this is the case. Uh, I will say that, that governments that have their insurance plan through Maine Municipal Health Trust, they provide all that information, so it's easy to, to comply. But as I said, the plan you're with, they don't provide the necessary, um, information. And to get that information, you need to hire actuaries and, and have tons of actuarial information. And to just do it on your own would, would be very expensive. So, so you, and I, I believe it's Penobscot, also goes with the adverse opinion because, as I said, it doesn't really detract from your statements. It's not misleading to the users, but because you're not in compliance with that, uh, it's called GASP-75, that, that standard, it requires the, the adverse opinion.
And once again, I'd remind you that, uh, GASP is not required, is suggested. I mean, that's a recommendation. And so we're not, it's not like we're committing a violation. We're just not.
No.
With their suggestion to, you know.
No, that's correct. It's not, I mean, they're not, you're not non-compliant or anything like that. It's just, the statement doesn't have the, doesn't adhere to the standard, so that's why you have that, that adverse opinion. But again, that's only your governmental activities. All of your governmental funds, general fund, airport, jails, uh, everything else is, is an unmodified opinion, so. Um, so Mike did most of the financial statement audit piece, so I'll turn it over to him, um, to go through, give any questions. And, uh, my part of it was more the single audit side, the, the, the federal compliance, so.
All right, so, uh, I, I guess I'll just walk you through, uh, the statement in that position to start. Um, you can see cash as of the end of, uh, as of December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one was, uh, ten, right around ten point three million. Uh, your accounts receivable, uh, net of allowance for uncollectibles was, uh, just under five hundred thousand at four hundred, just about that, four hundred ninety-seven. Uh, you have some prepaid's, uh, for a hundred forty-seven, five sixty-four. Uh, capital assets, uh, at the end of the year were sixteen point eight million. Uh, you have some deferred outflows related to, to, to the pension, uh, at a million dollars, million thirty-five. Um, what, let's see here, accounts payable at two hundred ninety-three thousand, uh, due to other governments, three hundred seventy-nine thousand. Uh, payroll liabilities, ten six fifty-nine. Um, we have a net pet pension asset, uh, of a hundred sixty-three thousand eight forty-one, uh, OPEB liabilities of two point one five million. Uh, crew compensated absences are on, on your books for three hundred thirty-eight thousand, uh, nine hundred eleven. Uh, you have some, uh, deferred inflows of resources, some unearned jail revenue of two hundred eighty-one thousand forty-four. Uh, deferred inflows, uh, related to pensions of, uh, two million two hundred forty-four thousand eight hundred eighty-six. Um, if you look at your net, the breakdown of your net position at the end of the year, uh, sixteen million eight thirty-seven zero seventy-nine is invested in capital assets. Um, and you'll see that that matches the balance of your, your capital assets back, up, back up in your asset section. Uh, you have restricted net position of seven million nine eighty-four eight sixty-four. And your unrestricted net position is a, uh, negative balance of one million five hundred fifty-eight thousand and thirty-eight dollars.
Now, Michael, can you explain, i- i- is that a negative balance? Is that a bad thing?
Um, it, I mean, normally a negative balance is, is a bad thing. But again, this is the statement in that position, which includes, uh, GASP sixty-eight, I get, which is essentially, we talked about GASP-75, GASP sixty-eight, is essentially the same standard, but it relates to pension. So this is your share of Maine Pers underfunded liabilities. So that, that's not a check you're ever gonna have to write. I mean, recording these liabilities, deferred inflows, deferred outflows. Um, but again, it's just, it's required under standard. Um, you're never gonna write this check, so I don't want to say it's not a true number, but it's only as it's represented in your statement of net position. The more accurate representation that you look at as, as commissioners and as managers and county administrators is gonna be in the general fund. Uh, because that's truly what you have on hand. Um, so as, as I said, a, a negative isn't a good thing, but it includes a lot of items that really aren't on the books, so to speak. I don't, I don't know if I explained that well, but.
Well, I'm reassured, I'm reassured we don't have to write a check, so.
Right, so, yes.
Well, no, th- this is basically our share of the Maine Pers' promise.
Exactly.
Yeah.
And I mean, if Maine Pers, if we, I always say, if we ever get to the point where Maine Pers can't fulfill their promise, I think we're all gonna be in a lot of trouble and, and no one's gonna write that check, so. Yeah, and I'll go into that a little bit more, uh, when we get to the, uh, the balance sheet for the governmental funds. You'll be able to see your, your fund balances. Uh, turn it on. Yeah.
Right.
I'll start, actually, before I get to that, though, I'll, I'll go over the statement of activities, um, which is, uh, page, uh, page six. Um, so if we, if we look at your functions programs, uh, I, I believe it's, that there's no changes from the prior year, all the, all the same programs. Um. The only one, the only one. Oh, oh, yeah, that's true. Uh, ARPA was, was new this year. Um, but, uh, you can see all, all the expenses related to each of these programs and you can see the the directly related revenues, uh, charges for services, and then you can see the, any, any grants that were run through the programs. Um, giving you a net, net expense after, after, uh, applying, uh, the grants and charges for services against the expense. And then, uh, below that, you'll see, uh, general revenues. Uh, you'll see your tax, tax commitment, uh, for the year of, uh, six point six million. Uh, there were some pilots, uh, revenues, uh, thirty-one thousand eight thirty, a little bit of interest at twelve thousand eight sixty-three, and then other revenues of, of a hundred eighty-five. A little bit of interest at twelve thousand eight sixty three and then other revenues of of a hundred eighty five thousand. Uh you can see your your net position increased by five million six hundred ninety five thousand. Uh s- it started the year at seventeen uh seventeen point five million and ended the year uh just over twenty three million. Alright, now we can take a look at the governmental funds balance sheets, uh you can see all your major funds are broken out. Uh your general fund, which is always a major fund. Uh you have your airport operations, you have your jail services, uh you have the UT community benefit fund. Uh you have your capital projects fund for the airport. Uh and then new this year, like like we had said, is your ARPA grant fund, uh which which essentially is there to track uh. Track the use of your your ARPA funds that you received. And then we have this last column here for for your non-major funds, um and then the totals column off to the right. Um if we look at your fund balance categories at the end of the year, um. You have a small non-spendable balance of of a hundred forty seven, five sixty four. Uh restricted fund balance, seven uh million nine eighty four, eight sixty four. Uh committed fund balance of one million nine hundred seventy one thousand and thirty six dollars, and then you have your unassigned fund balance. Which is uh. At a negative a hundred forty one thousand six ninety seven.
That's primarily due to the jail fund being, which consistently runs uh in the red.
Right, yeah, if you look at just your general fund, uh you you actually have a positive uh unassigned fund bal-. Fund balance of a hundred forty eight thousand. Uh committed's the same, the the general fund's the only only fund with committed fund balances. Um and then a small balance in 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 non-spendable at a hundred seven thousand two seventy.
And the not, the non-spendable is is prepaid's um. It's just required that it be reported as a non-spendable item. Because it's not directly tied to a to cash. It's a, it's a resource, but it's not cash. Any questions so far?
That capital under the airport, capital project, that that's uh. Can you explain that one? I think I know where it is, but.
Oh, that one is underfunded.
Yes.
Right, I think that's where they run the AIP.
Yeah, they had that money payable. Basically, there was a large payable to another fund, we'll we'll get, we'll see that in the footnotes. Can't recall what it was, which fund it goes to, but.
Alright, so if you look at the uh statement of revenues, expenditures and uh changes of fund balances, I. Let me zoom in here a little bit so I can see this better. Alright, so. So this statement here, uh you'll be able to see the change in in each of the funds uh. Fund balances during the year, um you'll see. See revenues for each fund, uh for your general fund, your your major source of revenue is is your tax commitment. Um there's also some intergovernmental charges for services uh. Some investment earnings, which is interest. And a little bit of other revenues, the tax commitment is is the. By far, the the largest source of revenue, um airport operations. Uh it's a split between an intergovernmental and charges for services um. Jail services, you have some intergo- governmental revenues of six hundred thirteen thousand uh charges for services at a hundred thirty one thousand. And other revenues of seventy three thousand. UT community benefits, the it's all charges for services there at at three hundred eighty eight thousand eight fifty five. Uh capital projects uh. Intergovernmental revenues of eight hundred eight thousand three eighty five. Uh ARPA grants, you could see you received five, five million, three hundred forty thousand, two hundred ninety dollars there. And then your non-major funds only have a hundred eighty thousand uh total revenue. As far as expenditures go, uh most of your expenditures are 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 in your general fund. Uh you can see all the different uh. The different functions that they're allocated to here uh. The jail uh also has so so has just under three million of expenditures, um you can see. Compared to the revenues, they have have quite the, a pretty large decrease in fund balance. Uh during the year um. At 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 a two million one hundred thousand eight eight hundred ninety six dollar. Uh decrease, um that's covered by. By tr- operating transfers in mostly from the uh from the general fund. So you can see your your fund balance in your in your in your general fund increased uh from. Two million one hundred ninety thousand to two million two hundred twenty six thousand. Uh your your airport operations fund balance increased uh from one million two hundred eighty four thousand. To two million one hundred thirteen thousand. Um your your jail services fund decreased uh from a negative ninety six thousand dollar balance. Down to a negative one hundred thirty one thousand dollar balance. Uh the UT community benefit fund increased quite a bit from two hundred twenty three thousand eight fifty five to. Or sorry, uh from one million fifty four thousand eight fifty to one million two hundred seventy eight thousand. Uh capital projects uh. That started at zero and it's down to to a negative sixty two thousand. Uh ARPA grants uh started at zero uh. So the 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 fund balance is equal to your change in fund balance of of four million five hundred, five hundred eight thousand.
So overall, it was a a a positive year, I mean, you had an increase in fund balance of five point five million dollars. Most of that was attributable to the ARPA funds, which. Uh I know a lot of that will be distributed out, but that was four point five million of the increase, so. The rest of the government, the rest of the county has a whole increase by by right around a million. So overall, it was a, it was, you know, a a positive year. Next several items are the the notes, the financial statements just gives more detail, um I don't know if. Again, I don't know if you have any questions. Uh if not, we can skip over the the notes, um and then I'll look at the single audit piece. Which is. Yeah, schedule is expenditures of federal awards is page forty. So because you expend over seven hundred fifty thousand dollars of federal funds. Uh you're required to do the the federal single auditor compliance audit as it's called. Uh your total expenditures, federal awards were one million eight hundred and twenty seven thousand six eleven. Uh the largest categories of that were um airport improvement grants uh for eight hundred and sixty eight thousand. And then uh the ARPA funds, uh you expended eight hundred and thirty one thousand. So we had to, we have to select programs, um you're what's considered a a low-risk audit to you because you've had good audits in the past. Uh they've been timely filed, so. That means we need to cover at least twenty percent of your your federal awards. Anything over seven hundred fifty thousand needs to be looked at at least every once every three years. So we have done the airport uh improvement program consistently in the past, so this year we just concentrated on the. The ARPA funding. Um again, that was eight hundred and thirty one thousand dollars. Uh the, we did have one finding to report, uh had to do with subrecipient monitoring. Uh for, as part of the ARPA program, you need to. Have a program in place to monitor the money that goes out the door and and ensure that. Um the subrecipients that that you're passing this money through to is is spending it properly, so. Uh you do need to have a a program in place and and um stick to that program. So I I suspect that you'll get that in place if you haven't already, uh just said that. Issue was caused by half stern ha- high staff turnover, which I I know you all know was an issue. Last year and overall misunderstanding of program requirements. Uh there was no, and no question costs associated with it. So again, we just recommended that. Management developer program to properly monitor subrecipient awards and and conduct the monitoring immediately.
Yeah, just a second please, um. Michael, is it the Kitty's responsibility, I mean, is that something we charge her with to develop this program, monitoring program?
I mean, we certainly can utilize her in conjunction with Monica and me, obviously, I think that's part of what she and herself that. Uh depending on the amount of money you pay, it could be one of these subrecipients that receiving some of the ARPA money, so. We ultimately, it has to come to the county, but we certainly can. Can utilize her to uh to pull, because there's obviously standards out there for these types of. Monitoring of of subrecipients, I know. Monica and I have both seen some of the stuff and talked about initially when the. When the audit came out, so I mean, it's certainly something we can put together, but we can consult with her as well.
So that's something that's in the works, developing this program?
Yeah, we've talked about it already.
And and it's probably short-lived, right?
I mean, basically, yeah, and and once you get all these funds expended or. Expended in the nature where you're gonna have it, we're giving it to another entity for certain services. You know, once that's done. So the two may not correspond, but we obviously know by twenty twenty six anyway.
So, and we're not reinventing the wheel here, this is.
It's just having a clear, a clear policy in place and then and making sure that we're taking. Information back from those subrecipients, collecting that data to make sure that that we understand how the money's been spent. Where it's been spent and that it's important with the overall funding, you know, provisions of funding source, so.
And if we make a discovery that it's not.
Then we have to go back and call up the subrecipient. I mean, in theory, up to, depending upon, again, the audits which have been discussed and what. What the overall federal government's gonna do in terms of keeping track of all these, but. I mean, in theory, if it hadn't been mismanaged or being justified, then it could be a potential of having to go back. And seek rescue or uh, you know, county being on the hook for that one way or the other, so it's obviously important to have that monitoring in place.
Tim, sound, you you do other counties, it sounds like this is something that all counties or recipients of.
Yes, and I I I agree with everything Michael said, that I mean, in in what you said, you didn't. You don't need to reinvent the wheel, I mean, it doesn't have to be a complex program. Um number one, just get a policy in place uh for for a program and procedures. And and follow through on that um. Uh you know, you can, you can do some sampling with with specific individuals, um you know, set a. Set a threshold, I mean, I know some towns get are getting more than others. You know, if if towns are having the compliance audit for their ARPA funding as well, then. Then you could, you know, maybe fall back on those audits and have them submit a copy and then just do. Do some sampling, but it it sounds like Michael has a pretty good handle on where he wants to go with this and. And also, I was gonna say, you know, any any cost incurred in the monitoring. Could come from your your ARPA funding as well too, so. It doesn't need to be picked up by the the county. And this is, ARPA, ARPA is a fairly broad-based program, I mean, I. What what you do need to have the program in place, but there. From what I've seen, I mean, there aren't a lot of costs that can't be. You know, fit into that program, but you know, there are a few guidelines, but. Uh the 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 important thing is just having the program in place and and doing the testing, but. Uh from what I've seen in the past, I don't suspect you're gonna find any many issues.
No, technically, technically a studio. Tim, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Oh no, that was all I had, um, no, that was, that was basically the the gist of the single audit, we had the one finding, everything else was. Was um was good and it met all the compliance requirements, so it was just a subrecipient monitoring issue that that we found.
Okay, and I was going back to that negative sixty two thousand.
On the airport program, yes.
Yeah, it it, is that, that's just a timing issue, I think.
I almost think it was either a timing issue or had to do with some matching. Requirements that didn't get submitted into the fund. Uh but yes, I'm quite sure it was just a timing. Timing issue. That that fund showed the negative at the end of the year.
So in other words, we expended, we expended those funds, they have not been reversed.
Exactly.
Yeah. Well, Tim, I'm gonna show my ignorance here, but I I do know, or at least. Seem to recall that every, every time we talk about the audit, we're waiting for it because we wanna know what we have for surplus. From the that particular budget year, we can apply to the next budget. Where do I find that number in my book?
Um, let's see, so on the general fund. Page.
Direct me to a page.
So, is it seven?
Seven.
Believe it's page, yeah, page seven. Um, no, that's right, so. So in the general fund, you had an unassigned or unrestricted surplus of a hundred and forty eight thousand three twelve at the end of the year.
So that's the number that we could could.
That that's the free and clear number, now there was also one point nine seven one million dollars of committed monies. And if I can find the footnote that details what that was. It's near the end.
But that's only, that's only one point nine of the nine point nine, correct?
One point nine of.
The total nine point nine.
Yeah, um. Right, yeah, total, what, nine point nine of fund of. Total fund balance. One point nine is committed.
The categories make up the balance of that.
The the bulk of it is restricted. Your fund balance, seven point nine of your nine point nine is restricted. Four and a half million of that is ARPA. Uh one point two is community bet- community betterment and two point one is airport um funds.
Yeah, I I guess my question and comment is, is that a hundred forty seven is what we have available to pull forward into twenty two? For any surplus that we may have applied to that budget, Michael?
Yes.
Is that what it is, Tim?
Yeah. Now, committed, committed funds are also kind of part of the budget. Go- going forward, it's basically funds that you appropriated and then rolled forward. So like that one point nine million of committed, uh thirty six thousand is registry of deeds. One oh five is courts, one fifty six sheriff. Uh probate uh twelve thousand, commissioners fifty two hundred, DA sixteen thousand. Uh the health trust, five hundred and six thousand, EMA a hundred and one thousand. RCC sixty thousand.
And where where are you getting those?
Page thirty eight. Sorry, yeah, maintenance, seven hundred and seventy nine thousand, and then unclassified, which is contingency. Uh volunteer fire department and FHC DC is a hundred ninety one thousand.
But I'm not concerned, Tim, about the nine point nine, I'm concerned simply about the hundred and forty seven thousand and how. How if and when, did we need that for the twenty two budget, Michael? In other words, we had, we had. We had appropriated some money, we appropriated some, but did we need that at the end of the year, Monica? Did we need to pull that forward? Or did we have enough in twenty two to cover it, so we didn't have to pull forward? Anybody know?
I mean, technically, twenty two hasn't been the final audit, hasn't been obviously done yet, and you're still closing stuff out right now, right?
Right.
So to know whether or not we're gonna be short on twenty twenty two.
We won't, we don't need the audit though to to give us a ball, I figure on whether or not we're gonna have to pull some money forward, whether we're gonna have to use undesigned aid or. We budgeted, what, two, twenty fifty thousand?
I just, I just don't have.
Yeah, okay, that's a, that's a discussion for another day. Yeah, yeah, we, okay, Tim, I'm sorry, that really doesn't affect you as.
No, that's alright, no, it's a good question. Cause. I mean, you do have a good solid fund balance, but most of it is committed or restricted, uh you you don't have a lot of. Access there in the unrestricted, but. But I mean, as far as moving stuff forward for budgetary, if you do need it, you can tap into that committed because. That's committed by commissioners and you can. You can prove that as as needed.
Yeah, you can.
Again, it's just, it's it's prior year appropriations that have been. Again, it's just, it's, it's prior year appropriations that have been unspent and rolled forward, so. Um, as commissioners, you can, you have the authority to. Decommit it, move it to other categories if you want, but.
If the need is no longer there.
Correct, yes, so, so while it does look like you're, you know, you don't have a lot of. Unassigned unrestricted fund balance, you do have that committed to fall back on.
Yeah, no, this looks healthy, in my opinion. Okay, thank you, is there any question, further questions of each gentleman? So, uh, motion to accept and file. Like, in order.
Well, I just think time's out on me too soon. Uh, I'm going to move that we accept the auditor's report as presented, to, to accept and file the auditor's report as presented.
Seconded. Over the second, is there any further discussion or questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 So you have us, thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you, and I suspect we'll start on twenty twenty two soon, it's about that time.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Thank you. Okay, commissioner's business, first is the rules of order.
I'm gonna move that we approve the Hancock County Commission Rules of Order as presented.
Seconded.
You just made a couple.
Yeah, it was basically, yeah, E and F to this. Speculable order dealing with the workshops and the uh.
Remote.
Remote, yeah. Consistent with your adopted policies.
And, one of my questions is, because of this, we'll probably rescind at some point the policy that. Uh.
Well, if I recall, I thought you did that two meetings.
Okay, that's what I couldn't remember.
It was just, we were waiting to make these final changes to, to, to update based on what you voted on the last meeting, and then rather than approving it, you just. We decided to do one final clean copy for today, basically.
You call the sheriff.
So, so the, the question i- is, we've taken action to rescind what we need to, it's just approving. Okay, so, it sounds like we have that motion on the floor with a second. Is there any further discussion or questions? Ready for vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Folks, are you here for the uh, bait, baitment hearing?
Yes.
Okay, we can't start at the ten o'clock. And I'm going to make a motion in a minute, we're going to an executive session to discuss union negotiations, we're gonna. Do, do that for a couple minutes before ten o'clock, so. Uh, at that point, you'll have to, you'll allow us some time to ourselves from it, okay?
Sure.
Uh, gentlemen, I'm not gonna meet with Joe, but I would like to discuss preliminary before we meet with Joe, so if we could just use a couple minutes of this to uh. To do that while we wait, or do you wanna take full fifteen off?
Uh, no, we can do it fifteen minutes, I'd be great.
Well.
Do we need Joe here?
No, I wanna discuss without Joe present, I did want the sheriff present, so. Okay, so, so I'm gonna move that we go into an executive session for the purpose of discussion, you, discussing union negotiations.
So, as permitted by.
I'm going to move to go into executive session on the title of one, section four oh five, six subsection D, for the purpose of conducting union contract negotiations.
Seconded. The discussion. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Yeah.
The opposed.
Maybe you need to lock that door or throw them out when they come in.